Okay, class, so in learning module four, one of the first assignments you have to do is your time management part two project. And essentially, most of your work should be done already when you assessed your weekly calendar in the previous project. So here, what we're doing is we're turning it all into fractions, decimals, and percents. So if you click on this Excel spreadsheet, what should happen is it should open up. Go ahead and open that. I'm gonna enable it. You probably won't get that message, but I did. Okay, so as you can see, there's a chart here, and there are some instructions here, as well as the pie chart to the right. It's okay, Abram. You can always email me that part later, okay? So the biggest piece to this is the chart. So obviously, in one week, there's only a total of 168 hours. So none of this should total more than 168 hours in a week. So for me, I used an example that I sleep about 42 hours a week. And to write the fraction for 42 hours in a week, I put 42 over 168. So all of these fractions in this column will be over 168. And then if there's a simplified version of that fraction, you would put that here. And then we would convert the fraction to a decimal by doing the division. 1 divided by 4, we know is .25. And when we convert that decimal to a percent, we get 25%. You should do that for each and every category until this is complete. This says 168 hours, and this should ultimately say 100%. The fraction section kept reduced. Sometimes, what you might need to do is highlight it. If it's changing the number that you're entering, you would need to highlight it and right-click. And you would look for format cells. And where, right here, where it says number, you could, we could just change it to number. And that might actually work. So let's see what happens. See, mine didn't change, 42. Let me see if it does it again. Oh, that converts it to a decimal. So we don't want it to convert to a decimal. We want it to stay as a fraction. So I'm gonna put it back to a fraction, and I believe I had it up to two digits. Let's see. I hope it doesn't convert it on me, and it did. How come it didn't convert this one? Let's check this one. Says the same thing. I'm not sure why the rest of them are converting. Well, that's kinda nice for you guys, though, so you don't have to simplify it on your own. Currency, number, general. Let me see what happens when I type it in general. Okay, so in order to... It's okay, Avery. So in order to fix the fraction column, what you wanna do is you wanna go ahead and highlight those boxes. Then you're gonna right-click with your mouse, you're gonna go to format cells, and then you're gonna hit general, because basically that allows you to type in whatever you want. And then you wanna hit okay. And that way, it should not convert it to a decimal or a reduced fraction or anything like that. Okay? I hope that helps you out, Abram. And as far as, so what will begin to happen is that as you start to fill in these numbers... I'm just gonna kinda make one up. As you start to fill in these percentages, as you go all the way over, and I'm just making these up as we go, you'll see that the chart on the right starts to change, okay? So the idea is that when you're done everything, this will be 100%, and you will have different percentages in each portion of the category here. And it will ultimately change the colors, so it'll be a visual representation of how you spend your week. Do you guys have any questions about that part? Now, once you're finished, okay? Once you're finished, you're gonna wanna file and save as. You're gonna wanna give it a good name so that you can find it on your computer. Then you can close the document after you save it, and I'm not gonna save mine. And then what you're gonna do is when you actually click on your assignment, you can browse your computer down at the bottom, right here. And when you click browse your computer, you'll be able to find the Excel spreadsheet that you completed and saved to your computer earlier. Do you guys have any questions about that part? Now, as far as these questions are, you can either type these right into the box when you upload your assignment, or you can email these to me separately if you needed to, okay? Abram, did that answer your question about that? Okay. Let's see, what else we have for learning module four? Learning module four is all about fractions. I'm only requesting that you upload homework 4C, okay? So let's just go to 4C, just because. So this is adding and subtracting unlike fractions, or adding and subtracting fractions with unlike denominators, and there's 13 problems. So it should be maybe two or three pages worth of work. It shouldn't be that big of a deal. You'll scan it and upload it to that particular assignment. Is there any homework section in general? It's okay, Abram. Don't worry about it. There's a box you could've typed those into, but some students just emailed it to me separately, so that's fine. Is there any homework section in particular, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, that you guys would like me to start with? Because obviously, I can't do every single section in just an hour. So is there a part you guys want me to focus on? Anything? Anyone? Back up? Sure, I can scroll back up. Just let me know where you guys want me to start. 4F? Okay, and Abram said a little more. Okay, where else? Is that good enough, Abram? Roxanne, I'll make sure I start with 4F, okay? Abram, did I scroll up far enough for you? Oh, the titles of the sections, like, all the way up here. So I'm definitely gonna do some problems from this homework set already. Just let me know if I can start there, and then you guys can always ask me later. Okay, alright, so that's what I'm gonna start with, guys. Let me make that smaller. Move that over here. Move that over there. Okay, and 4F is a good section because it kinda has a little bit of everything, which is a good way to review. So we're gonna start with, write the mixed number 4 and 4/9ths as an improper fraction. So a mixed number is obviously when you see a whole number written with a fraction, which is what you see below, okay? But when we talk about improper, basically what we mean is the numerator is larger than the denominator, like this fraction here. So the way that we can convert 4 and 4/9ths is simply by doing a couple things. We're gonna take this whole number, and we're gonna multiply it by the denominator, which is 36. And then we're gonna add the numerator, which is plus 4, so I get 40 over 9. Very good, Abram. And we can do the exact opposite, which is take it from improper to a mixed number by just doing the division. 40 divided by 9 goes 4 times. It gives me a remainder of 4, and then you keep the denominator. So you should always be able to go back and forth between the two. If there's a specific number you guys want me to get to, make sure you let me know, okay? Otherwise, I'm just gonna kinda skip around. And this example is exactly what I was just talking about. This is an improper fraction already, and we wanna convert it to a mixed number. So 20 divided by 3 is, not 7, but 6. And that's 18, so that gives me a remainder of 2 over 3. You guys have any questions about that one? Same thing, same thing, same thing. Alright, let's look at this one. This kinda looks like a word problem. So here it says, "If you only have a 1/3rd measuring cup, and a recipe calls for 20 and 1/3rd cups of flour, how many 1/3rd cups would you need?" So then, essentially what we're doing is we're taking 20 and 1/3rd, and we're dividing it by 1/3rd to see how many of those cups we would need. So before we start dividing, we need to go ahead and change this improper fraction to a, this mixed number to an improper fraction. So here, we're gonna get 61 over 3 divided by 1/3rd. Does anybody remember how to divide fractions? What are we actually gonna do? If you're not sure, it's okay to just say you're not sure. So dividing fractions is basically, very good, Abram. Basically, instead of dividing, we're gonna change the problem to multiplication by flipping or finding the reciprocal of the second one. So I'm gonna change the problem to 61 over 3 times 3 over 1. And now, I'm gonna go ahead and work this out. Now, I can see that the way the problem is written, there's actually, I can actually cancel and make the problem easier for myself by canceling these 3s. And when I multiply 61 times 1, I get 61. And 1 times 1 is 1, and 61 over 1 is my final answer of 61. So whenever you have fractions that you're trying to divide or multiply, it's always easier to keep them improper. And if it's division, we're gonna always flip the second one and change it to multiplication. And there's also a little video here if you guys need extra help. Any questions about that one? Roxanne, was there any particular number you wanted to make sure I got to in this section?
No, you don't have to. I mean, technically, technically, 61 over 1 and 61 are equal. They're equivalent versions of each other. But 61 is really a simplified version. I don't have to write 61 divided by 1. The simplified version of that is just 61, okay? Okay, perfect. Alright, so this problem here is, instead of division of fractions or division of mixed numbers, this is actually multiplication. So in this case, I also wanna change both of these to improper fractions. So 4 and 2/3rd is gonna give me 4 times 3 is 12, plus the 2. So I got 14 over 3 times. What's the, do you guys know what the improper fraction for 5 and 1/4th will be? I definitely will do number 12. Anybody know what the improper fraction for this would be? Very good. Well, not 20. There you go, 21 over 4. Now again, this is already multiplication, so I'm not flipping anything. I'm not changing the problem. But what I do wanna do, and what always makes sense, is if I can simplify before I start multiplying, I should. So 3 and 21 have some factors in common. 3 goes into 3 once. 3 goes into 21 7 times. And 4 and 14 also have a common factor of 2. 4 divided by 2 is 2. 14 divided by 2 is 7. And now, I'm gonna multiply the results of that. Just gonna change my color. So I got 7 times 7, which is 49. And 1 times 2, which is 2. Very good. And 49 over 2 is improper, but it is also simplified. Very good, Roxanne. Okay, so I would definitely type that in as is, okay? Any questions about that one? Let's see. Division, I'm gonna do this one too, just because this is division of 2 mixed numbers. So again, I'm gonna change them both. That's gonna be 3 plus 1. I got 4 over 3 divided by 8, 9, 10, 11 over 4. And again, before I work that out, I wanna go ahead and change it to multiplication and use the reciprocal of the second one. And I can see I'm gonna get 16 over 33. And that would be my final answer because I cannot simplify that at all. A reduced mixed number. Enter your answer as a reduced mixed number or as a whole number. Well, this can't be a mixed number. It's a fraction. So let's go ahead and type it in to see if it likes us, because sometimes, I'm at this, doesn't like us. There we go. I imagine that, okay, was that number 7? Let me go back. I imagine if it was improper, then I would have to do that, and I'm guessing my last one, was it this one? It was this one, right? So we had... Okay, Avery. Let me know when you're back. So this one... That was the final answer, 49 over 2? Because 12, 13, 14, that was 14 over 3 times 21 over 4. Yeah, it was 49 over 2. Okay, and it says, "Enter your answer as a reduced mixed number." Very good. So that definitely means we wanna go ahead and convert it. So how many times does 2 go into 49? 24, and I believe the remainder is 1 over 2. So I should be able, I'm gonna switch to my pointer to see if I can enter this properly. 24, space, 1 divided by 2. And let's just preview it. That looks good. There we go. Alright, any questions about that one? Okay. Erase. Let's see, what else I have here? That's pretty straightforward. Anybody have problems when it's a mixed number and a whole number? No? Okay. Do number 12, okay. So really, the only difference with number 12 and the other problems we were working on... Right, right, Abram. When it's a whole number and a mixed number, just write the whole number over 1 and do exactly what you always do. So in a problem like this, we're gonna pretty much do the same thing we've been doing. It's multiplying mixed numbers, so I wanna change them to improper. So I have 18 plus 1 is 19 over 3 times 8 over 5. And the thing we have to remember is that first fraction is positive and the second fraction is negative. And basically, a positive times a negative is a negative. So no matter what happens, I know my answer is gonna be negative. I also see that there's not a whole lot for me to simplify, so unfortunately, I'm gonna go ahead and get a kinda ugly, what I would call an ugly fraction. And I do not believe that there is anything that can simplify that. So I'm gonna go ahead and type it in. Says, "Enter your answer as a reduced mixed number" again, so how many times? Let's see, okay, so there will be... No, no. This isn't an addition sign. This is a multiple, that dot right there that was really small, that's multiplication, so it has nothing to do with adding and subtracting. Okay? But even though this is an okay answer, it does, like Abram brought up last time, it does say, "Enter your answer as a reduced mixed number." So I'm gonna have to go ahead and do this division. So I wanna ask myself, how many times does 15 go into 152? And I'm gonna say 10, just 'cause that looks good. So 10 times, which would leave me a remainder of, and Abram already says, a remainder of 2 over 15. 2 over 15 cannot be simplified anymore. So my final answer is gonna be a negative 10, space, and 2 divided by 15. I'm gonna go ahead and preview it. That looks good, and I'm gonna submit. Any questions about that? Okay, alright, good. Alrighty. Let's see. I'm gonna go down a little, see if there's any problems we haven't done. That's the same thing. Okay, this one is asking us to find the area. Says, "If the room is 17 and 1/4 feet wide and 16 feet long, find the area." So let's just, obviously, a bedroom is usually a square or rectangle. So we have 17 and 1/4 and 16. Area is the, very good, Roxanne, the length times the width. I could do a prime factorization for you, no problem. So area is length times the width, which basically means I'm gonna take my 17 and 1/4 and multiply it by 16, which essentially means this is gonna change to an improper fraction. And so I'm gonna do 17 times 4, which is 68 plus the 1, so I got 69 over 4 times 16 over 1. Do you guys see what I can simplify before I start multiplying? What 2 numbers can I simplify before I start multiplying? Since it's a quarter. I guess you could, but I'm pretty sure, well, let me see, "Enter your answer as a whole or a decimal." Well, Abram, you could use that because I'm looking at what it, how it's asking you to enter your answer, and since it's saying you could do a whole number or a decimal, that would be okay. If this said to do it as a fraction, I would say go ahead and leave it as a fraction because you have to enter it as a fraction. But that's not what it says, and yes, it is the 4 and the 16, so that'd be 1, that'd be 4. 69 times 4 is actually 276, and then 1 times 1, so I get 276. Now, this actually ends up being a whole number anyway, so that all, all that decimal and everything kinda became irrelevant, so that should be good. There we go. I would say, if, read it, before you decide to convert it to a decimal, read the directions. If the directions say it's okay to enter the answer as a decimal, then go for it. But if it wants you to specifically enter it as a fraction, I would just leave it as a fraction. Okay, so reading this problem, what operation are we gonna actually do? "If elephant grass grows 2 and 1/5 inches a day, how many inches will it grow in 8 days?" What operation are we actually doing in this word problem here? What operation do you guys think it is? Add, subtract, multiply, or divide? Multiply, very good. Very good. So I'm not gonna do this one. I'm just writing it out, which we know that'll be over 1, that'll be 11 over 5, times 8 over 1, and, well, I already did it now. Right? "Enter your answer as a reduced mixed number." So this again is asking myself, how many times does 5 go into 88? It goes about 17 times, and that would give me a remainder of 3 over 5. So that would be my final answer. You guys have any questions about that part? Is there, we have about 20, 25 minutes left. Is there another section you guys want me to concentrate on? I'll go back to the titles, so you can see that. So we did F. Do you want me to look at some of the competency checks or the complex fractions? Go for it, Roxanne. I already submitted everyone's name and the password information to all of the Valencia Testing Centers to take your midterm, so you can take it as soon as you want. It's already there. Competency check 4, is that the one you want me to do? Uh, Maria? So let's see, competency check 4, right here. Oh, and the prime factorization. Okay, let me see if I can find the prime factorization. Let's see. Well, I can make one up, okay? So prime factorization. Avery, email me about that. You can take the midterm at another testing center at another college. There's a little bit of footwork we have to do to set it up, but it is possible. I have someone else doing it. Okay, so just email me, so we can talk about it. Alright, so Abram, real quick, the prime factorization. It's okay, we can work it out, Avery. Don't worry about it. Alright. Okay, so let's say that the number I was given was the number, I'm gonna start with a small number. The number 75. And the instructions say, "Prime factor this," or "Find the prime factorization of 75." Essentially, what you're doing is you're breaking down the... Essentially, what you're doing is you're breaking down the number into factors until all of the numbers that you've used are all prime numbers. So let's just start with, what two numbers multiplied to give me seventy-five? Any two numbers. What two numbers multiplied to give me seventy-five? It could be one and seventy-five, but let's pick something other than one. Something other than one. I could do five and fifteen. That does work, right? Five and fifteen? Okay, so one of these numbers I can continue to break down and one of them I cannot because it's prime. Which one of these numbers is prime? The five, okay? So the five is done. It's at the bottom of its tree. It's already prime, can't go any further. But the fifteen, I can break down into three and five, both of which are also prime numbers. So technically, prime factorizing seventy-five would be three times five squared. These are the prime factors of the number seventy-five. Yep, you would have to do a little up arrow too when you type it in. Okay, any questions about that? Okay, gimme, gimme one second, okay, guys? I just have to do something. Okay, I'm back. Sorry about that, guys. You're welcome, Abram. Just email me if there's something else, okay? Alright. Okay, so let me clear that out. Oh, my pen stopped working. Okay, alright. Bye, Abram. Um, is there any other sec- oh, competency four. That was what we were working on. That was what we were going to, right? Okay. Which question in particular, um, did you want me to do, or it doesn't matter? Maria? Was there a particular question you wanted me to do? Number four. Okay, so competency check four and number four. This one, does that look about right? Okay, um, so this one was a lot like the examples we did in the beginning that were just in the homework section. This is a negative fraction divided by a positive. So first of all, a negative divided by a positive is always a negative, so I know the answer's gonna be negative. And when we're dividing fractions, what we're really gonna do is multiply by the reciprocal, which means the flipped version. We take that second fraction and we flip it around. Um, before I go ahead and multiply straight across, I do see a couple of things that I can cancel. Um, ten and twelve have a common factor of two, so I can change that to a five and that to a six, which gives me smaller numbers to, at the end of the day, multiply. So the six and the three give me the eighteen, and the five and the thirteen give me sixty-five. Okay? Um, and it does say, write your answer as an integer or reduced fraction. So this should be fine. I'm gonna go ahead and type it in just to make sure. And again, it was negative, negative sixty-five divided by eighteen. And then I'm gonna hit submit. There we go. Any questions about that, Maria? Okay, so it wasn't question number four then. Let me look around. You let me know if you see it. Was it with decimals or was it with fractions? Cuz these all have parentheses, but they're decimals, like this one. Alright, this is an order of operations problem. So essentially, what we wanna do is we wanna do whatever is inside of the parentheses first. So there are a couple of different things happening here. First of all, I have a negative fraction trying to be added to a positive one. But really, what that means is I'm gonna end up subtracting these fractions. Also, I cannot add or subtract these until the denominators are the same. So I have some work to do first, okay? So I have two-thirds plus three-fourths, and I can't do anything with them until I give them the same denominator. What denominator do you think I should give these fractions, since they already have a three and a four? Twelve, okay? Now, since I'm changing the bottom to twelve, that means I also have to change the numerator. So that means I'm gonna have the negative eight here, and this is gonna change to a nine. Now again, since the signs are different, one is negative and one is positive, I'm, I am gonna end up subtracting and taking the sign of the highest number. So negative eight plus nine gives me a positive one over twelve. Okay, so now I'm gonna take the negative eight over nine, the minus sign, and then the answer I got from the parentheses, and I'm gonna rewrite it. So essentially, now what this is, this is just negative eight over nine minus one over twelve. And again, what you wanna do is find a common denominator before you can do anything. So, um, I would say nine times four is thirty-six. So what I could do is I could make both of these fractions have a thirty-six denominator. They're also both negative. Since I had to change the denominator to thirty-six by multiplying by four, I wanna do the same thing at the top. I had to change this to thirty-six by multiplying it by three, same thing at the top. Now this time, the signs are the same. So am I gonna add or subtract these numerators? What do you guys think? Am I gonna add or subtract these numerators? What do you guys think is gonna happen? When they had different signs, like up here, what did we do? We subtracted, right? So when we have the same signs, what do you think is gonna happen? I'm gonna add them. Very good. So I'm gonna get negative thirty-five over thirty-six. And I'm gonna go ahead and type that in to make sure that it likes me. It's negative thirty-five divided by thirty-six. And I'm gonna submit. There we go. Why did I make it thirty-six? Um, because I know that nine times four is thirty-six, and I knew twelve times three was also thirty-six. So you wanna pick something that they both can get to. I could've made it bigger. Like, some people don't like to figure it out, so they just go nine times twelve. But nine times twelve would've been a really big number. Why would I wanna do that? I don't wanna make the number big. I wanna use the smallest possible number that I can, and thirty-six was that number. Sometimes, if you're not sure, you literally have to sit there and go, you know, nine times one is nine. Nine times two is eighteen. Nine times three is, you know, twenty-seven. Nine times four, thirty-six. And then yet, twelve times one is twelve. Twelve times two, twenty-four. Twelve times three, thirty-six. And then finally, when you find that common factor, you know which one to use. Um, is that a problem you want me to do, Maria? Negative ten over thirteen divided by negative four over fifteen? Okay, that's cool. So I'm just gonna do that on this blank screen that I have here. So you gave me negative ten over thirteen divided by negative four over fifteen. So the first thing to realize again is that it's a negative divided by negative, which means my answer is gonna be positive. And then again, since it's division, whatever, whenever you're dividing fractions, you always wanna go ahead and change it to multiplication by flipping that second fraction, finding that reciprocal. And again, before I go ahead and multiply straight across, the best thing for me to do is to simplify where po- where I can. And I can see four and ten, they're both divisible by two, so I get a five and a two here. So now I have something a little more reasonable to deal with. So fifteen times five. So yeah, fifteen times five is seventy-five. And then thirteen times two is twenty-six. And twenty-six is not divisible but by anything except for two and thirteen. So, um, that would be my final answer. Unless, of course, it's said to enter it as a mixed number. In that case, I would do the division and get two. My remainder would be twenty-three over twenty-six. Any more specific questions that you guys have? Okay. Um, well, if you guys don't have anything specific, I'm gonna go ahead and start re- uploading this video so that other people can watch it later. Um, just in case you didn't read, I did give you guys a couple extra days to, um, get your chapter four assignments in, which I'm sure you don't mind. Um... Let's see. I did it until Sunday, the thirty-first. You can see it right here at midnight, so you have some extra time for those. And also, I gave you a reminder that not this week, but next week, your midterm is due, okay? Don't forget to, you're very welcome, don't forget to take the practice midterm, which is in learning module four. You should see it before the midterm. You guys can try this midterm review as much as you want before you go take the real thing, okay? Any other questions, guys? Okay. Alright, thanks for joining me. Um, I'm gonna work on getting this recording uploaded to the YouTube and the announcements in your Blackboard. Um, please, by all means, text or email me questions you guys are having along the way. The texts I get more immediately. The emails do take me a little longer, especially if for some reason I feel like they get stuck in spam world. I don't know why. But, um, if you're not getting a response from me via email, please don't hesitate. Go ahead and text me because I get that right away. Okay, you could even take a picture of your screen and send it to me, and I can try to walk you through it that way, okay? Thank you, guys, and I'll see you soon.